Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Vanderpoel joining us by Zoom tonight. So before we move on to adoption of the agenda, I'd like to call forward Dominic Jones, who is our Building Decarbonization Program Manager, to speak to us about our Energize Thurston program. Hi, Dominic.
For the record, my name is Dominic Jones, and I'm the City of Olympia Building Decarbonization Program Manager. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council for this opportunity to speak. The Climate Program is proud to announce that we've launched the countywide Energize Thurston Heat Pump and Heat Pump Water Heater Program in partnership with Thurston County, the Cities of Tumwater, Lacey, Tonino, and South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity. This work expands on two years of previous Energize Olympia programs, which resulted in 172 reduced-cost heat pump installations. In total, self-funded Energize Olympia participants leveraged $142,000 in rebates and savings, in addition to a $600 to $1,200 group purchase discount on each installation. This is not including the 101 fully subsidized installations for low- and moderate-income households. A fun fact is that Energize Olympia's 172 heat pump installations will eliminate an estimated 1,953.72 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent over 15 years. That amount is roughly equivalent to eliminating the emissions from 456 gas-powered vehicles over one-year period. Energize Thurston is a group purchase program designed to reduce barriers to energy-efficient heat pump equipment. The program offers program-exclusive discounts on heat pumps and heat pump water heaters, vetted contractors, and streamlined access to support -- access to utility, local, state, and federal incentives. Participating households can leverage up to $5,000 in savings to significantly reduce the cost of these upgrades. Thanks to our partnership with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity and several grant awards, the Energize Thurston program is able to provide a limited number of free heat pump and water heater installations for low- and moderate-income households who participate in the program. So why should we care about heat pumps? This is because heat pumps are an all-electric source of energy-efficient heating, which can help lower energy bills and offers a great way to reduce household greenhouse gas emissions. They also provide access to cooling, which is becoming more and more of a need in our community. We're excited to expand this year's program by including heat pump water heaters, which are the second-largest energy use in most homes besides heating and cooling. Heat pump water heaters can be up to three times more efficient than a typical electric water heater, and Energize Thurston is the first Energize program in Washington State that includes heat pump water heaters. In order to participate in the Energize Thurston program, you must be a resident of Thurston County and attend a free program workshop. At the workshop, you'll learn about the benefits of heat pumps and heat pump water heaters, how to access the utility, state, and federal incentives, and how to apply for Energize Thurston's discounts and free installations. We have a workshop on demand that's available now at energizethurston.org now through May, which is available in English as well as Spanish subtitles. If you'd like to attend a workshop in person, we have four upcoming workshops at various locations throughout the county. The first is tomorrow, April 9th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Yelm Timberland Library. The second is April 22nd, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Lacey Timberland Library. The third is May 6th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Tonino Timberland Library. And the fourth is May 27th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the Olympia Timberland Library here in downtown. Applications will close on May 31st, so make sure to attend one of the program workshops or watch the workshop on demand by May 27 if you're interested. You would only need to attend one workshop to apply for the program and access the benefits. And once again, the webpage to register for a workshop is energizethurston.org. Thank you for this opportunity to share information on the program.
Thank you very much, Dominic. All right, so we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. Actually, before we do that, I do want to mention that just before we started our meeting, I greeted Shelley Willis from the Family Support Center, who was here to receive a mayoral proclamation for recognizing Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and hence that's why you see these wheels up here that you probably have seen on the lawn of the Capitol campus. And so I do just want to call our community's attention to that particular issue, and please look into it more, and please reach out to the Family Support Center if you want to know more about how you can help in that regard. So with that, we will move on to adoption of the agenda. We are going to remove Item 6B from the agenda tonight, which is an approval of an ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code 5.82 related to rental housing to address income-to-rent ratio screening practices. We are removing this from the agenda tonight because the state legislature is still in the process of deliberating on several policies that are related to this area, and we had a study session related to several other tenant protection programs or policies as well in recent weeks, and we gave specific direction that we prefer to take action on this type of policy after we see what the state legislature, in fact, decides on matters related to tenant protection policies. So at this time, we're going to table that and bring it forward at a future date. So with that being said, I need a motion to adopt the agenda with removing 6B.
Move approval as amended?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
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 We have an agenda. So our first item tonight is Item 2A, which is Special Recognition and Proclamation Recognizing April 2025 as Earth Month. And we have Dave Sederberg from Earthbound Productions here to receive the proclamation this evening, but we will begin with a reading of the proclamation from Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Whereas Earth Day was created 54 years ago, recognizing the importance for everyone to participate in preserving our natural resources, and on that first Earth Day, 20 million Americans rallied for a healthy, sustainable environment. And whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles. And whereas all life forms on Earth have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment. And whereas in Washington State, April is recognized as Earth Month, emphasizing the urgency of enlisting all people to protect and sustain life on the planet. And whereas each year, the City of Olympia also declares April as Earth Month and urges others to do the same. And whereas the procession of species was created in 1995 to commemorate the 25th anniversary of Earth Day and to support congressional renewal of the Endangered Species Act, inspiring thousands, young and old, to deepen their understanding, appreciation, and protection of the natural world. And whereas all of us, whereas all of us as caretakers of our planet have an obligation to change the human behaviors that contribute to climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the Earth's beauty as well as its natural resources. And whereas community members, schools, environmental organizations, and businesses have raised over 100 Earth flags to unite those during the entire month working in earnest of the planet and to build intergenerational action through local activism and global environmental consciousness. And now therefore be it resolved that the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim April as Earth Month. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 8th day of April 2025, Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
All right, and I see we have Dave Sederberg from Earthbound Productions on Zoom. It's good to see you, Dave.
Uh, actually, just myself. I'm not representing Earthbound Productions today.
Oh, good to know.
So, um, thank you, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank the city council and current and past mayor, who, uh, when we initially came up with the idea, immediately accepted and jumped on board, and that's with great appreciation. And I don't really have any prepared remarks this year, but I would like to mark or note that this is the 10th year we put the flags up, and that the idea, while it's not an original idea, there's lots of communities, cities, maybe states, but certainly universities, schools, colleges, and cities ofs and parks that do Earth Month. What inspired it here was we can give thanks to the Seattle Seahawks, because it was about 11 years ago. I was driving through town with my daughter, and we saw 12 man flags all over the place, because you remember about 10, 11 years ago, the Seahawks were doing fairly well. But she asked me that question, why are there flags with the number 12 all over? And so that inspired a conversation that we started talking about flags, and eventually got to an Earth flag, and she asked why there are not as many Earth flags up, and I told her, well, it's only one day, and we decided to change it from there forward. So it's been great, and the community's been real positive when we put them up over the years, and it's just been a great experience, and I'm glad to live in a community that allows us to do something like this, and it's been good. The one, one other thing I'd like to share, because like I said, I don't have any prepared remarks, but, and just, just thankfulness, is that, I mean, besides, you know, wanting to increase awareness, involvement, participation in Earth Day activities throughout the whole month rather than just the one day, which can be hard with these crazy schedules, but, you know, we put them up to, you know, make people think about it, and, and the compliment that we get the most when we put these up, and it happens every year, whether we're putting them up or taking down, people will say, wow, that flag is really beautiful, which is kind of a funny thing to say, because I remind them that that's what we live on, you know, that beautiful blue planet, and that we're lucky to be on it and we should take care of it. So thanks again for what you, thanks again for the proclamation supporting it.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you very much. Any comments from council? Keep up the good work, Dave. It's good to see you here, year after year, and all the work that you do to, not just during Earth Month, but all throughout the year. You're, you're constantly there, bringing awareness to our community over a number of issues, and you're, they are not just for the issue itself, but you actually are part of the production of whatever is going on in celebration and recognition of what we're observing in Olympia, and so it's, Earth Month is certainly something that's fitting of the spirit of, of the City of Olympia. So thank you so much for, for being behind that, and I look forward to seeing you again soon. And we have a beautiful proclamation that's signed here, and we'll make sure we get it to you.
Yeah, I would have, yeah, you made, I would have stopped, I would have been there in person, but we were in contact with somebody who had COVID a couple days ago, so we're playing it safe.
Yes, and we all appreciate that.
All right.
You have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. All right, so we will move on to Item 2B, which is also a Special Recognition Proclamation Recognizing Fair Housing Month, to be read by Councilmember Gilman.
Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined into federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States, and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas Olympia is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all, and whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities, and whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. And whereas the City of Olympia has completed work to identify housing disparities and barriers through participation in the creation of a countywide assessment of fair housing and formation of regional goals to affirmatively further fair housing in Thurston County. And whereas the City of Olympia has joined the Black Home Initiative to strive to right the wrongs of past discriminatory practices and commits to doing all it can to ensure black homebuyers get an opportunity to purchase homes. And now therefore be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in Olympia, as an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Olympia. Signed in the City of Olympia, Washington, this 8th day of April 2025, for the Olympia City Council, Dante Payne, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. And now I'd like to call forward Adria Buchanan, who is the Executive Director of Fair Housing Center of Washington, to be followed by Christina Daniels, who's also here from the Thurston County Realtors Association. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council for this proclamation and for really being committed to affirmatively furthering fair housing here in Thurston County. My name is Adria. I'm the Executive Director of the Fair Housing Center of Washington. We are located in Tacoma, but we serve 23 counties, including Thurston County, so all of Western and Central Washington. And our primary responsibility is to help those who feel like they're experiencing discrimination, and so they will contact our office and we'll help them figure out if their housing situation is being challenged because of some aspect of their identity. A lot of times, how, a lot of times tenants are facing situations that are really more landlord-tenant related, and so for those situations that are really particular to some aspect of their identity, that's where our agency steps in and helps them gather their evidence, and then eventually if they'd like to file a complaint with the Washington State Human Rights Commission. The other thing that we do is we conduct testing throughout the state, so we have a secret shopper program throughout 23 counties where we assign people profiles and see what their experience is like trying to obtain housing, and based on their experience, we again may file a complaint against a housing provider. We also conduct training, and we train members of council, we train people who are working on housing issues and policies, and that can include housing authorities, folks, realtors, you know, anyone who's involved in the housing industry. We train them on how to recognize their own bias at times, but also help clients who are facing these situations as well. And then the last thing that we do is advocate, and so we're really proud to also be members of the Black Home Ownership Initiative and other initiatives throughout the 23 counties that we serve in trying to further housing opportunity. And so I will leave on this note that just today I was helping an individual who was, who is still living in an apartment complex that was built without all the appropriate permits. And so what happened was that the city came in and did an, did an inspection, this wasn't in Olympia, but the city came in and did an inspection and ultimately condemned the building and told everyone that they needed to move. And so this individual has until the end of the week to move out of her unit and to figure out where she's going to live. And this is compounded by the fact that she's 80 years old, right, and she's disabled. And she is telling me, please make sure that you can call the shelters and see if there's a bed available. You know, she's saying, I'm used to having a hard life, so I know that, you know, I may have to be in an uncomfortable situation, but I want to make sure that I have a roof over my head at least. So these are the stories that we hear every day, and so I really am appreciative of this proclamation, just recognizing how important housing is. We all know that affordable housing is a challenge, but I appreciate the work that the City of Olympia is doing to make sure that housing is being built appropriately with the appropriate permits, and that when it comes to trying to house those of us who find ourselves in really challenging situations, that those services are available, and that there are lots of housing providers out there who really do deeply care about the residents of Washington. So thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you, Adria.
So Christina Daniels, I'm here representing Thurston County Realtors tonight as a Government Affairs co-director, and I warned you in February we would be back. We're big supporters of the Black Homes Initiative Group, as you know, and excited to be part of the fair housing group. I'm actually going to introduce our current president, Mark Kedebayachi. He is highly esteemed. He teaches some of the fair housing classes to our members, and he's super awesome, so I'm gonna let him say a word.
Thank you very much, Christina, and thank you very much, Mayor, and council members for allowing, giving me a few minutes to speak as well. But first, I'd like to recognize our fellow Realtors that who's are in the room here. If you could stand a little bit to be recognized, to support ours and the fair housing. Thank you very much for being here. And one of the things that when we look at fair housing and we look at equal opportunity, I could talk from the Realtor standpoint. Number one, as Christina mentioned, because of the Lawrence Floyd incident, state of Washington decided that every licensee in the state of Washington of the real estate licensee must take fair housing every three hours on every two-year renewal period. So that is a mandatory, so that is in place. And as we talked about, as the council member read, 1968, that's the fair housing law that we know of, right after the assassination of Martin Luther King. But I could tell you, as a Realtors Association, we've been around since 1908, but we do have a dark history. And in 1924, our own code of ethics says that property value was more important than a giving everybody a equal opportunity to own or to have a housing. Our own code of ethics said that, you know what, everybody should not have an equal opportunity. That was our code of ethics, and we believed that through 1968. We, as an association, we actually campaigned against fair housing law, passing of fair housing law, because we still believe the property value is more important than giving everybody equal opportunity. Of course, 50 years later, and after that, of course, we are proponent of our fair housing, our code of ethics has changed. I think we believe as a Realtors, having a roof over our heads is not just an American dream, but it is opportunity and right for every single citizen in this country. And a lot of the issues that we have in City of Olympia, you know, one of the items that was pulled from this agenda had to do with housing. Homeless issue is talking about home, have to do with housing. So whether we like it or not, housing's involved, and I don't really care which side of the aisle you are in, which spectrum of the politics you're in, even within our association, we're divided. But we all agree, and I think all of us could agree, the housing is important for everybody, and everybody should at least have the opportunity to able to have an American dream. Not even American dream, this is, I think, a dream of everybody who lives on this earth. We talk about Earth Day and the environment, but I don't think there's anybody in the earth saying, you know, I don't think I want a roof over there. There might be a couple, but it'd be very rare to see that as well. But we, as a Realtors Association, we know that even though the law was passed way beyond before that, and the recent one, we know in 1968, things hasn't changed that much. Maybe by law, but our practices haven't really changed. And our goal, as I do do the instruction for fair housing class for our state as well, and also my goal and our industry's goal and our association's goal is someday soon, with the help of the citizens of Olympia, with the council members, and the elected of Olympia, and with the Realtors Association, other organization, that unfair housing becomes a history, not a present or the future. Hopefully that day will come soon, that we could all say, you know what, unfair housing was a history, and we're striving to do that. It takes each one of us to be able to accomplish that, as well as an individual, as an elected or a businessperson, to make sure that we have an opportunity for everyone in this country and this city of Olympia to have the housing as part of their dream, not the dream, but the reality. But thank you very much for giving us the time to speak this morning, this afternoon, and thank you for the proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any comments from council? Mayor Pro Tem, when?
Christina Daniels is right. You are awesome. Yeah, yeah, I don't know how I haven't bumped into you in Olympia, but I would like to see you again, sir. Um, thank you so much, everyone, for, for being here for this. What an important, just really, really important and worthy cause. I loved hearing from, from everyone that spoke. I love that this is something that our council supports, and I'm very interested, and I think other people are probably interested, in, in some training about fair housing. So hopefully we'll see you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gilman.
I just wanted to appreciate your work, your advocacy, and your, your support for fair housing, that it's, as, as Mark described, the world hasn't changed a whole lot since 1968, so we're still engaged in, in this effort, this struggle to make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity, and it, I think it's super important that as an organization you've engaged in this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. It, that point to which you just mentioned, that things haven't changed much, it's that expression of the more things change, the more they stay the same. And so what you all are here to do is to make sure that they don't stay the same, because the status quo is something that's easy to default to. And we know in this country that race and class are sort of inextricably woven together, and, and fair housing is all about making sure that that discrimination doesn't persist through insidious or hidden ways that we know that it has since 1968 and before. So thank you for calling attention to that. Thank you all for being here this evening to accept this proclamation. I do have one signed here for you, and if you're willing, we would love for all of you to come forward and take a photo with us with the proclamation. Thank you. And as you're on your way out the door, Adria, I do just want to say thank you for your work as well, and clearly your heart is in the work that you do. Thank you for sharing that anecdote with us, and I look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you. Okay, all right, so that concludes our Special Recognition part of our agenda for tonight, so we will move on to public comment. But before we begin, I do just want to point out a few reminders. There is a clock to my right, your left, on the wall here, indicating that you have two minutes of time for your comments. There is a box here on the podium where you will speak. There is a green, yellow, and red lights, the green light indicating that your time has begun, the yellow light indicates that you have about 30 seconds remaining in your comments, and the red light indicates that your time has expired. If you do not finish your comments in the two minutes allotted, you can email the remainder of your comments to the rest of the council. Just a reminder that we are approaching an election season, so please refrain from expressing your support for a candidate or a ballot initiative, or your opposition to a candidate or ballot initiative at the federal, state, or local levels. So with that, I'll turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, so we have quite a few signed up for in-person public comment tonight, so I'll just call a few, so you can get ready and know when you're in queue. So we have, to begin, we have Michael Connor, followed by Michael Tate, followed by Pam Nigara.
Hello, my name is Michael Connor. I come before this body today to thank y'all. Back in December, I got the chance to come speak in front of this body. Back in December, I got the chance to come speak in front of this body to plead for you all to make Olympia a sanctuary city. But to be honest, I was scared that day. I did not expect you all to be willing to hear what people like me had to say, and I was fully prepared to be asked to leave. I was genuinely surprised when this body sat and actively listened to what myself and my community had to say. And when I heard that not only had you all listened to us, you actually acted, making Olympia an LGBTQ sanctuary city, I wanted to return the favor and give you all the same respect and humanity that I was granted that day. I will be truthful. Many individuals who I asked to join me here today were annoyed or in disagreement with my decision to come before you today and thank you all. Many people believe that because you were elected here to speak for all of your constituents, that we should just expect you to be good people and to protect said constituents. I understand that sentiment, I do. But having grown up in Texas, having had representatives who do not listen to their constituents, I know how important it is to foster a healthy dialogue that does not only focus on what you all are failing at, but also upholds the ways that you all are succeeding. Currently, there's a divide between the governed and the governing. Constituents here and around the country are watching their representatives refuse to step up to the challenge facing them, and that has caused a significant lack of trust in people we have elected. But if we, as both individuals and as a society, if we're going to survive the current rise of authoritarianism, we need to be able to work together for constituents to be able to trust in our government to protect us, and for us as constituents to make our representatives feel supported enough to stand up. And at least for today, in this moment and on this specific issue, this body has proven that they are willing to stand up for and protect their LGBTQ constituents. So I stand before you today to do my part, to support you and to thank you truly. What you have done may seem small, but acts like these save lives and restore that broken trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Tate.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Michael Tate. I'm a citizen of Thurston County. I'm speaking against 6A, which is the plan to enter a contract with the Squawson Indian Tribe to buy the old, what I think is the old City Hall, which has become a correction center now. So the reason I ask I'm here tonight is because Olympia is an avowed sanctuary city. So that means it's all important to us as Olympians that everybody's civil rights, life rights, happiness, you know, in living their life can actually happen. And I don't know whether you know it or not, I hope you know, that the Squawson Tribe is going through a very difficult time where there are disenrolling members. And I'm here to speak for the members, many members, who have been disenrolled. It's a very difficult time. So I think the best outcome for tonight would be if you would just table 6A and learn about the problem, perhaps interview people from the tribe, both people who are in the government and people who are feeling the brunt of that power. So if that can happen, maybe I should stop for a minute and ask you if you're willing to do that. Are you willing to table that?
Mr. Tate, public comment is not a back-and-forth dialogue.
Oh, sorry then.
Yes.
Yeah, my mistake. So then, if you're not going to do that, let me just tell you a few of the things that I know are happening. People, dead people, dead people are actually being disenrolled from the tribe. There are other people who are being disenrolled, losing their house because it's an allotment house, and losing their income because everyone gets a, I think it's called a peratus share, check. So those things aren't going to be happening, so that means there's going to be more people destitute. And those people may come here, or they may go to Spokane, but you're taking the money from the tribe that could be used to support those people. Thank you.
All right. We have Pam Nogira, followed by David Larson, followed by Bob Jacobs. And I will just say, for everyone that is speaking in public comment, there is, while it's not a two-way dialogue, at the end of public comment, there is an opportunity for council to comment if we wish. So if you're hoping for a response, you might stick around.
Thank you. Good evening. Pam Nogira, the Judge for Olympia Municipal Court, the old City Hall, 900 Plum Street, to which is obviously on the agenda today. It is an honor to be a judge in this city. It is a special honor to be performing my duties in a building named after a long-serving and beloved judge to this community, Judge Lee Creighton. I am here to urge you to consider different solutions that take into consideration the needs of our community and the long-term financial impacts to our budget. Most of all, I am hopeful you are willing to listen with an open mind as I proceed with my comments today. You've requested Thurston County District Court to absorb our court. You have explained this should be primarily a financial decision. Even so, this would be short-sighted. Our budget is less than 3% of the city total budget. We don't have the numbers since they haven't been shared with the court. However, I can tell you that terminating our court is not in Olympia's best interests. First, if you terminate our court to enter into an inter-local agreement with Thurston County, you would lose local control over all budgetary decisions, because all disagreements would be dealt with in arbitration. Secondly, I also ask you to consider ways in which you can weaken costs and raise revenue in our court. But more importantly, I ask you to understand the key services that our community would lose. Our court operates five days a week. Our court services have commendable customer service. Our community supervision offer pre-trial and post-conviction services, something that it's not offered elsewhere and cannot be operated without a court. Our community court has just been relaunched to a full treatment court. I will email you my further comments, and I will invite you to show up to the report of the court this Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
All right. Dave Larson?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Judge Dave Larson. I'm the Chair of the Council on Independent Courts. I'm also a municipal court judge from Federal Way. I drove all the way down here because it's important to address you. I wrote you a couple, few weeks ago, offering our assistance to help you navigate through this. The reason I do this is because in 2009, they were trying to do this in Federal Way. And the pattern, and it's been many communities since, and the Council on Independent Courts was actually formed under Judge Scott Elf when he was president of the DMCJA. The goal is to be able to be a resource to local communities as they navigate this. The pattern that we see over and over again is the kind of, this kind of interest in trying to get rid of a municipal court, which is basically, I come from an atmosphere of being a civil lawyer in complex civil litigation. I went to municipal courts. It's one of the most important branches of court. It's the most, it's the branch that, it's the branch in your local government that serves the people the most. It's very important to your community. That's why I'm here, to make sure that I reoffer our services. The pattern we've seen over the years is very much interest. And then, once you get into the nooks and crannies, once you get into all the nuances that people are considering, you realize that it's better to stay with a municipal court instead of going to a district court. One of our members texted me, she couldn't make it, and texted me, she's a district court judge, and she actually deals with cities. And she's recommending also that, personally, that you stay with the municipal court instead of going to a district court. As Judge Nogira mentioned, the loss of local control is significant. And Auburn, for instance, has been regretting it since 2012, when they moved to King County. So I'm just begging for, to keep this process transparent, to keep it to where it's open, you keep an open mind, that you listen to other voices, that you listen to people that have been there, done that, got the T-shirt, such as myself and many other judges, that you listen to some of the folks that have had communities that have similar struggles that have dealt with it in different ways. So I very much look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Bob Jacobs, followed by Scott Elf, followed by Michael Cade.
Good evening, I'm Bob Jacobs, and I live at 720 Governor Stevens Avenue in Olympia. I've read a couple of articles recently about the proposed sale of our Plum Street properties to the Squawson Tribe. I have no problem in general with this idea. But there was no mention in these articles as to what the tribe could do with the land. This is an important location. It's the main entrance to our city. What do we want there, and what do we not want there? This would be the time to place limits on the use of the land. You have a lot more control at the sale or lease of land than you do via zoning. Tribes, like other property owners, have been known to construct some very large buildings. Do we want to put restrictions on the size of the buildings that would go at this place? Tribes also sometimes construct and operate casinos with lots of traffic and flashy signage. Do we want to place limits on that kind of use? Are there other concerns? And by the way, do tribes have any ability to override city building regulations? I don't know, but they're a very special category of operation. I urge you to consider placing deed restrictions on the Plum Street property as part of the sale in the interest of current and future Olympia residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Elf?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Scott Elf. I'm a former judge here in the city of Olympia, and I've spent a lot of time in this council chambers talking to you about the Olympia Municipal Court. In the years, we've talked about such things as our community court. And about 10 years ago, I came to this council asking for you to give us the ability to create a community court. And we became a mentor court. We were one of the mentor, we were one of four in the country, were a mentor court, and others could come here and see how to run a community court. That gives us, that gives you the flexibility to have your court, to be the thing that you want to have, and the thing that you can be proud of. And I've seen the proud, the proud faces of the council when we come and talk to you about the community court and about the municipal court in general. You have the ability to be flexible. As Judge Larson was talking about, when I was president of the DMCJA, we created the Council on Independent Courts because we wanted to make sure that we had the ability for municipal judges and municipal courts to be able to talk to their council, their city council, and be able to talk about the things that they can do for their community. And you have that flexibility. Now, I, the judges in Thurston County District Court are good friends of mine, they're excellent judges, but they do not give you the ability to be flexible, the ability to be creative, the things that you want to be able to do with your own city court. Now, I'm talking on my own personal behalf, I cannot talk about this in my professional capacity now with the administrative office of the court, so I'm here personally. So I do appreciate this council, I do appreciate the work that we've been able to do in the past together. I spent 19 years here as the judge, and I want to see that continue. And that was just a minor portion of the time that the Olympia Municipal Court has been a valued member of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Cade, followed by David Burnett.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mayor, councilmember. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments to you this evening. Again, my name is Michael Cade, I'm the Executive Director of the Thurston Economic Development Council, 4220 Sixth Avenue Southeast in Lacey, but I'm also an Olympia resident in 3526 Holiday Drive Southeast. Normally, when I come to you, I keep my comments fairly specific to the topic at hand. So I'm going to kind of meander through that lane that I swim in, as not only as an Olympian, but also as an economic development practitioner. Raised my family here, right? Three kids, they moved away, they moved home, which is a good thing. And one of the things that I've noticed about the council here, you have a history of being creative. You are a very creative lineage as a council. You solve problems, you look for, you look for results, and you look for creative ways to solve things. So having that as a backdrop, I would ask you, I'm here to speak on, obviously, the sale of that property, to think creatively, but, and then, but also think about the notion that about five years ago, I was invited to tour the Squawson Island Enterprises businesses. And I thought it was going to be 45 minutes, get in, get out. I spent three days walking through facilities and individuals. I've been meeting with the employees and the employers and the products and the service, the attention to detail. This is a high-quality investment. And as they think about what they are going to do there, or potentially do there at that site, I am very confident that you are welcoming into that site a gateway project into Thurston County and Olympia. I'm very confident that that development that you will see there is high quality, is what you want to see and what you want to see. It will drive new employment opportunities, it'll drive new opportunities for this community via tourism, a variety of different things. So there is a myriad of elements there at play. But as a resident of Thurston County in Olympia, thank you for your attention to detail, and thank you for your ethics of being creative, because I think this is a good thing. Thank you very much.
But last, but certainly not least, we have David Burnett.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak. For many years, the Squawson Island Tribe, let me back up. My name's David Burnett, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Island Enterprises. That's the division of the tribe that works on new business development, and we're working on this project. And for many years, the tribe has wanted to engage with the city and do a, do a project within the city of Olympia, and this opportunity came available. I've been working for probably the past year and a half, maybe more, with some of the economic development folks, the attorneys, in trying to put this project together. In addition to that, we have engaged with the, with the stakeholder group that is, that's putting together a destination master plan for this entire region. And that's, you know, all the municipalities, all the economic development, all the chambers of commerce, and so forth. And so putting together a way to draw visitors to this area. One of the things that was noted in that study in the report is that Olympia needs meeting space. So one of the things that we're looking at as it relates to this project is a, is a hotel with, with a, like, 20,000 square feet of meeting space and a landmark-style restaurant, so that this, this truly would be a project that would not only benefit the tribe, it would benefit the city of Olympia, it would benefit the state of Washington. We are the capital of the state. And, you know, this, this is the capital of a state who needs meeting space very badly. So we're happy to be here, and I guess I'm speaking in favor of the project. Thank you.
All right. That concludes public comment. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any comments from council? Okay, seeing none. I do just want to, just very briefly, say thank you to everyone who came out tonight to speak. While I won't be addressing any specific details in my comments about what was mentioned in public comment, I will say that these decisions are not made in a vacuum, and are certainly not made without consideration of all of the various aspects that were just, frankly, expressed to us in public comment. And so we certainly appreciate you coming here tonight to share your thoughts with us, and we will take them into consideration as we move forward as a body. So with that, we will move on to adoption of the consent calendar. I need a motion.
Move rules.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So that takes us to our first item on our agenda under other businesses this evening, which is item 6A. It is the approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of the city-owned real property located at 900 Plum Street Southeast to Island Enterprises Incorporated at wholly-owned enterprise of the Squawson Island Tribe, a federally recognized Indian tribe. And here, presenting this evening is our city manager, Jay Burney, who is joining us by Zoom tonight. Good to see you, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Again, for the record, Jay Burney, city manager. I am very sorry I cannot be there in person with you tonight for this item. I'm a bit under the weather, and I hope my cough drops are going to pay off as I get to this presentation tonight, so please bear with me. Before you tonight, as the mayor mentioned, is an approval of a purchase and sale agreement with Island Enterprises, a wholly-owned enterprise of the Squawson Island Tribe, for the acquisition of our property at 900 Plum Street, known by many as the Lee Creighton Justice Center. I want to start my presentation with some gratitude. I want to start my presentation with some gratitude. Although I am here tonight to bring this agreement across the finish line, the bulk of the work and negotiations to get us here were completed by our former economic development director, Mike Reed, who I hope is sitting there and can wave, and David Burnett, who you just talked to, CEO of Island Enterprises. I want to express a lot of gratitude and thank the both of them for all their time, energy, and partnership to get us here tonight. So just some thanks to Mike and David. And later in the presentation, I've set some time aside for you to hear from Chairman Chris Peters. And with that, I'm going to share my screen here. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So in terms of a bit of a background, on October 7th, 2023, the Squawson Island Tribe and the City of Olympia renewed their longstanding accord agreement. The accord commits both the Squawson Island Tribe and the City of Olympia to work together on several long-term initiatives. These initiatives include supporting economic and infrastructure opportunities, addressing climate change, and promoting cultural exchange through public art and community service. The accord underscores the mutual dedication to fostering economic development, highlighting the commitment to pursue joint opportunities that benefit the community. We have been in ongoing discussions with the Squawson Island Tribe and Island Enterprises around acquiring 900 Plum Street for well over six months. On or about March 10th, 2025, the city received an offer from Island Enterprises duly signed by its chief executive officer, David Burnett pursuant to tribal council resolution number 25-18, offering to purchase city-owned property located at 900 Plum Street Southeast, commonly known as the Lee Creighton Justice Center, for $8.2 million. The city's property, which is here outlined in blue on your screen, I hope you can see that, is generally described as Thurston County Tax Parcel Number 78202500100, totaling approximately 10.47 acres of land, more or less, on one parcel. Built in 1966, the 10.7-acre property served as Olympia's city hall until 2011. Repurposed as the Lee Creighton Justice Center, the campus has served as the location of the City of Olympia's municipal court and court-related programs, our jail, the Yashiro Japanese Garden, Plum Street Village Tiny Home Village, Saturday Waste Drop Off, and some other evidence storage for the police department. The city has determined by inspection and analysis that the property has reached the end of its useful life. Our most recent 2019 facility condition assessment concluded that the building is at the end of its useful life and serious consideration should be given to full replacement of the facility. The 2019 assessment identified, and identified and estimated $12.8 million to address failing infrastructure systems. Full building replacement would be in the tens of millions of dollars. Similar concerns around building condition prompted the closure of the city's jails in 2023. The proposed purchase price is $8.2 million. We did have the property appraised at $9.1 million. The proposed purchase price that we negotiated with Island Enterprises is, is within 10% of our appraisal. The agreement includes an 18-month no-cost leaseback to the city to provide us the time we need to fully transition all municipal uses off the site. The purchase and sale agreement also includes a 90-day buyer contingency once signed, but closing is expected on or before June 4th, 2025. The majority of the items included in the contingency period have already been completed by Island, Island Enterprises, so I expect us to meet the closing date, and in conversations with them, they do as well. The agreement also stipulates the development of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Squawson Island Tribe for the provision of city services, particularly public safety services. They have a similar agreement with other jurisdictions that we can build off of, and I will lead those discussions. We, the goal of, in the agreement sets out that we will conclude those discussions around an MOU before the conclusion of the 18-month leaseback period. I do want to say, I know we've received some questions tonight and some emails from the community since our press release around this transaction, wondering what the Squawson Island Tribe intends to build. All they have not yet shared publicly all the specifics. The tribe, as the council knows, is a trusted and valued partner with a long history of partnership in Olympia. I know and trust that their plans for the site will have the best interests of not just the tribe, but the surrounding community as well. As you have heard from David earlier, meeting, meeting a hotel space is the concept they have in mind. I'm excited at the economic development opportunities and prospects this sale brings. City staff will continue to work with Island Enterprises and tribal staff as their plans for the site take shape and continue to communicate their progress. As I mentioned, the agreement does include an 18-month no-cost leaseback to allow us time to transition city programs and services off the site. That work is already underway. We are currently evaluating options for the municipal court and court-related services. We are looking at options for moving those programs to other city-owned facilities, and we are also having discussions with Thurston County around the possibility of contracting with the county for court services. I expect to have a recommendation for the council very soon. I do want to acknowledge the impacts of these discussions on our court employees. I know it has been difficult for them as they await a decision on the future of the court and our court-related programs. No matter the decision on the future, I am committed to working alongside all of them to take care of all of them during transition. Additionally, we have reached out to our local sister city organization to aid in relocation options for the Yashiro Japanese Garden, are looking at options to relocate the current residents of Plum Street, Plum Street Village into other housing options, working with Waze Resources staff on the future of Saturday Waste Drop Off, and evaluating our options for contractually obligated parking needs and long-term evidence storage for OPD. I am confident we will have a solid plan in place for relocation of all these programs and services within the 18-month leaseback period. As I mentioned, work is already underway. So that is the background and the specifics. I do want to, before I move to any questions for council and possible action, I wanted to provide some time for comments from the chairman of the Squawson Island Tribe, Chris Peters. I know David Burnett also spoke with you during public comment, but wanted to also give him a moment if he wanted to make any additional comments. So I'll pause there for comments from the chair.
All right. Well, hachshel, it'll all be a good day to all of you. A little bit of drama before this, this meeting here. That's okay. I don't mean to waste anybody's time, but I'm going to speak to what Mr. Tate was speaking to, just, just momentarily, because he, I don't know if he's still here or not, but my email is on our website if anybody wants to get ahold of me. I've never met the man. He's never reached out to me. Two things. One, a little offensive that somebody who has no affiliation with the tribe would come to this setting and speak to our tribal sovereignty as a, as a sovereign nation. Never, never met him before. He never reached out to me once. Number two, it's unfortunate for him and for everybody to come to a setting like this and speak to things that he doesn't have all the facts. And he's been listening to rhetoric and lies. I would be more than happy to speak to him or anyone on the reality of what's happening within our codes and our laws. And so again, it's just such an unfortunate thing that he would come to this setting and speak to things that he really has no business speaking to. He just doesn't know the truth. And so again, I won't waste any more of your time on that. I'm, I'm so excited about this property and this, this acquisition, and I'm so thankful, hawa tubes chalav, thank you to all of you for the continued work and the partnership and the friendship that we continue to have in, in getting this monumentous deal done. We're excited as a tribe for this. We believe this is something that will be mutually, we know it's going to be something that will be mutually beneficial to both the tribe and the city and the community. This is, our business venture is going to bring some economy. We're going to uplift the economy of this area. We're going to uplift that Plum Street corridor, if you will. And we're going to bring something unique and needed to this area, to both the community and to visitors and guests. I'm going to get in trouble for saying this, but we're not building a casino. So just, I'll just quell that right now. We're not going to build a casino, everybody. We're not doing that. I don't, I don't believe. We, we have a nice casino. We're going to invest in our property in Camilche. We want to build something that is something that the, that the city needs, that we've heard they need. We want to do something that is business financially viable for us, but also something that the city can, can use and, and need as well. So that's important to us. And as the mayor said, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this time and city council, this didn't happen in a vacuum. This is months and months of conversations and, and working agreements, and we understand the potential impacts of this community and that area. We believe it'll be a good thing. We truly do. And that's, as a member of this, lifelong member of the Olympia area. We're also excited because it continues to reengage and bring our members, get them back in touch with their ancestral lands of this Dutchos people. We continue to, to remember where we originally come from, which is not a piece of land that the federal government set aside for us in Mason County. That's meaning for us. We're also excited about the fact that we're going to provide an amenity where our patrons and customers are going to have an experience where they are immense in culture, our beautiful culture, our artwork, our history, learn more about who we are. And it'll be a place where we can come together as community today. It's not the tribe versus the city, it's all of us today. We're excited about that and that continued partnership moving forward. And so, you know, with that, again, we're just so thankful for the partnership. We're thankful for the, the community responses and input. We're listening to, we really are. We're not the big bad tribe coming in here trying to push our way around. We're really not. We don't want to do that. We want to be good partners. We want to be stewards, the original stewards of this land. We do responsible building, and we're really looking forward to this unique opportunity and bringing a little bit of squaxon to this, to the City of Olympia, our homelands. And so with that, I, I do want to give David Burnett just a little more time and actually speak a little bit to the project. Nothing is 100% set. I also want to introduce a couple of people. I would remiss our vice chairwoman, Jamie Cruz, is over here in the corner. You'll hear from David Burnett here in a second. But two members of our Island Enterprises board and tribal members, we have Alida Post is our chair, and Daniel Koontz is our vice chair. We're all my, our, our squaxon family. And so, yeah, I'll invite David Burnett back up here to speak a little bit more about the project. And again, we're just super thankful. Oh, most important person that I brought with me is my chugwush, my wife, Brandy Peters. I say she's there too. Yeah, thank you. But yeah, I want to invite David back up here. And again, let's say hawa tubes chalav, hachshel, hachshel, hoi. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think chairman did a great job of, of kind of filling in some of the blanks when I was trying to rush through two minutes there. And I don't know if this is appropriate for back and forth, but I'm, I'm perfectly happy to take any questions. But I, I would just kind of, you know, echo the same type of sentiments that he just, that he just, that he just talked about as far as the approach of the tribe and had the, you know, desire to be a great neighbor and, and the desire to work together. So I, I really don't have a whole lot else to add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. So on that note about questions, I will just check in with our council and see if there are any questions. Councilmember Green.
Thanks so much for coming. I have heard these numbers before, but I think a lot of people in this room probably have not. What is the, what are, what are the employment numbers for tribal enterprises and the, the revenues that are, that it's bringing into our region?
Just related to this project?
No, as, as an entire entity.
As an island enterprises overall? Okay. So island enterprises overall, which encompasses some retail, some farming, some hospitality and entertainment. The, the, the total employment is, I have to kind of go through and add it up in my head real quick. I'm going to say that it's in the 1,500-plus employees. And for context, I would estimate that probably 10% to 15% of that number would be tribal members. And so really what we're doing is we're providing well over 1,000 jobs for folks in the community and, you know, our, our neighbors, and we depend on that workforce. We, we wouldn't be able to do that, which is, which kind of goes back to the, the notion that we would be, that we would be good neighbors because we're, we're interdependent, right? So there's that. And as far as the total revenue number, I, I would say within all of the tribe's enterprises, it's in the $200 million gross revenue range. And so this would, this project would, A, it would be attainable for the tribe. We have the ability to do this type of a project. It's a very large project, but it would, it would be a great addition to our portfolio, but it, again, a great addition to the community as well.
Thank you.
Very question. Any additional questions? Councilmember Madron.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to share a few words. It's just so nice to once again be smiling upon the faces of our friends at Squawson here in council chambers. I'm really, really excited about this. It's another step towards the agreement of our accord and another step towards our collaboration with one another, our friendship with one another. And I'm just really excited about the future of this property. It's, it really is a long time coming, and there's many things that we've worked on together, and everything starts off as just a small idea. And as we continue talking and building the relationships and building our friendships, those ideas grow into something really big. You know, Chris, Chair Peters, you said that, you know, it's bringing a little bit of squaxon to the City of Olympia. I say it's a lot of bit of squaxon right here. This is a big project, and we're all very excited about it. And it's starting to be that everywhere I look in Olympia, there are just reminders of whose land that we're on because we keep working on these things together. And it's just really evident that the tribe cares so much about the City of Olympia and that you care about the people who are here and, and the future of our community. And I just am very, very grateful for our partnership, our friendship, and really, really looking forward to this future.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I just want to echo Councilmember Madron as well. In, in my, so when I started on the council was right after the accord was signed by former Mayor Ma. And it's like, well, what does that mean? And the coolest thing about that is that it has come to life like no agreement the city has. I truly believe this is one of our most important relationships now, and it's because we've invested in it. We've spent time and we've broke bread. Like I can, you know, I, I know the names of tribal council members and their families, and I've broken bread with them and, and built trust with them in a way that we have, you know, common goals of freeing the Dushuts. We've hung our flag over city hall. We've renamed Squawson Park. And I also believe that it will be hugely mutually beneficial to the, to the broader community. If you've, if you've spent time, even if you don't like gambling, if you've spent time in the Squawson facilities or their businesses, it's what, what Mr. Cade described. They, they run clean businesses and they take care of their employees. I think that it's really exciting to bring the Squawson tribe back to their ancestral shores. And while it might be a, a business arrangement, I think there's going to be a lot more to it, as has been implied already, as we bring community together to break bread in new and different ways in, in these meeting facilities. I do have one question for the city manager, so I'll tee him up, because I think I heard him say, and I want to just be really clear for me where this decision is, is that this is about a facility that is well past its useful life. I've been on the finance committee of the city council for 14 years, and I don't remember when our first facility's condition assessment was during that time, in the, in the first few years. And this was on the list of things that needed to be flushed down the toilet. It was falling apart then. It's the reason we closed our jail, and this decision is about facility and property only and economic development. And so I just want to ask the city manager to restate what I think he said, that the decision around the courts and the court facilities and the future of the courts are separate, because this is a facility conversation and those decisions have not been made and are still steeped in negotiations and understanding of all of the different nuance that was brought up during public comment. So Jay, can you just kind of make sure I'm still on the right track with that and that I haven't missed something and some of the- and that I haven't missed something in some of the meetings I've missed?
Councilmember Cooper, no, you are right on track. As I mentioned in my presentation, our latest facility condition assessment in 2019 is consistent with prior studies that we've done in years prior that says this building is, is well past its useful life. In fact, we're continuing to put what I'll call good money over bad into an aging facility that's not on par with other facilities that we, that we house our employees in. So we would be at this situation either having to replace this facility or potentially close this facility, no matter what. I think it's an opportune moment in time that the Squawson Island Tribe is here with a purchase agreement. And the decision on what happens with our programs and services on that site is a, is a, is a wholly different conversation than the purchase agreement that's in front of you tonight.
Thank you very much. And I know through multiple tribal chairs in my time, we've been looking for where is the right project. And it takes, just like this city hall, you know, the investigation to find a place was really tough because it's really hard to pull together a city block. And so having a 10 acre parcel that it's owned by one owner is actually a chance of a lifetime for an economic development project, and I'm really excited to support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanderpoel, followed by Councilmember Gilman.
I'm going to be kind of brief, but I, I agree with a lot of what I'm hearing. I, I will say that this is, to me, this is an investment in the future, right? This is an investment in the community, in the community and, and our relationship with Squawson Tribe. And so much is, this is, this is, this is continuing down the path of the future of our relationship, the future of the city and, and into future generations. And so to me, this, I cannot wait to vote on this because there have been so much work going on for so long now and, and, and I'm looking forward to it. I really am. It brings a lot of optimism to where, where we are and where we can go. So thank you. And again, thank you all the staff for working through this and bringing all this together.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpoel. And you look awake for a new dad.
I try. Lots of, lots of little naps along the way, I will say. Time is weird right now, but I'm here.
Oh, I remember. Well, all right. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. So I've, I've been wary in the different conversations we've had over this last year because it's, it's a big decision to offer, to, to help put this land into trust in the care of the Squawson people and have our, our rules not apply and, and to not have control over whether it's, I mean, just things that happened in Las Vegas and in Tacoma that I would rather not have just off the freeway exit here. So I, I thought about that. And when the agreement came, I poured over it and I'm trying to look for details. And then I thought about the visits I've made to the Squawson museum. And I, I thought about the, the truth that they've documented and told, that they've been stewards of this place since time immemorial. And, and then I also thought about our recent work on reparations. And I thought, you know, bigger than money is probably respect and trust is something you can offer to create reparations. And so with that on my mind, I'm, I'm very much in support of the, the project and encourage us to trust and, and to rely on the millennia of stewardship that the Squawson people have already offered to this place.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Payne. I just want to echo a lot of what I've heard. When I was appointed to council a couple of months ago and Jay brought me up to speed on this project, I just was immediate, immediately excited to hear about it and to hear about our work with the tribe. Island Enterprises and the tribe are, are absolutely driving a lot of economic growth in this community. And I think a lot of people don't recognize that. And so, Mr. Burnett, that's why I wanted to allude to that. Because again, I think it's just an incredible opportunity and I really look forward to thinking about, you know, how do we as a, as a council, how do we with our economic development professionals here at the city and within the county really think about this opportunity and the ways that us through our work on council, through the work in committees can really position the city to, to leverage this opportunity and really think about how we can, can help boost what, what you all will be building there and doing there. Hospitality and tourism are an incredible driver for our community. And I just think it's, it's not only just a fantastic partnership and, and expansion of our accord with the tribe or continuation of that work, but I really think it's a pretty incredible economic development opportunity that it's just going to be wonderful to watch it develop.
Any additional comments from council? I'm just going to say that it's not lost on me, the irony that we are here at the city of Olympia as part of the US government, if you will. And this land was stolen from your ancestors. And then we have, you know, we have you here today having to essentially speak to this narrative that somehow there's an insinuation that you don't have the best interest of the city of Olympia in mind. That irony is not lost on me. The Squawson Island Tribe is and has been partners with the city of Olympia and we should all be thankful and grateful for that. Frankly, all Indian tribes across the nation. The fact that they approach us with diplomacy, with a government to government relationship as opposed to fighting us to get back what's theirs, we should all be humbling ourselves before that. And I don't understand why we are here, you know, to sort of make these insinuations that seem very insidious and steeped in something else that I will just save for another time. But with that, I, I really appreciate our partnership. I appreciate, you know, really just sort of not only getting to know where the tribe is thinking of moving forward as a community, but also the fact that, you know, we, we are often lockstep on a lot of things. And, and the fact that you know that this community has the needs of meeting space, has the needs of wanting to see more lodging options for people in this community, for example, those are things that obviously are of interest not only of the city of Olympia, but for the Squawson Island Tribe as well. You are your own government. And so sometimes I think that folks don't seem to respect or understand that we are talking about a government to government interaction with this transaction. And, and so I, I just appreciate the opportunity to work together to get to this point. I do want to acknowledge that there is, there's a bittersweetness to this, right? I can feel the energy in the room, right? That there's a certain love and nostalgia for the, the very property that we're talking about. There's a lot of history there. We have people sitting in the chambers right now who they report to work. That is their, their place of duty, where they go to serve the city of Olympia. And, and that's tough. And this body has to make these tough decisions. And, and as the city manager alluded to earlier, nothing has been decided in the other regards in terms of contracting with the county. But this is an incredible opportunity that we can't pass up, that we've heard time and time again, our constituents and those who do business with the city of Olympia and with the state Capitol campus have said, we need more space. How can we make this happen? And it's been years and years and years of conversations as to how we were going to make that happen. And, and, and we here have it right in front of us to take an opportunity. And so I thank the Squawson Island Tribe for being the ones to step up and actually make us get closer to bringing that to fruition. So I thank you for being a, a tribe of action and for being just outstanding community members who are willing to, to move together. So with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor pro tem for a few comments and then to make a motion.
Wow, do we feel, big feels for this one tonight, don't we? 6A is a big item, or I guess just six now, is, is a big item for us tonight. And I, I have a lot of thoughts. I've been, and all of, a lot of those things have been, have been shared. I'm, I'm really excited about this. I'm overall really enthusiastic. I guess I'll just share a couple of things that, that haven't sort of risen up in, in comments is that I know that there are a lot of folks that have contacted us that are concerned about what about the current use there, such as a yeshiru Japanese garden and, and other uses and services that are there. And so I'm, I'm glad that we are committed to, to during that 18 month period, figuring out how we're relocating all of those different services and finding use elsewhere. And then I do think it's really important to honor the current building. There's, there's a lot that people say about it all the time. Sometimes it's just, you know, a flippant design choice that people don't like. They, they don't understand the shape of the building. Why does it look like that? But that is, it's a, it's a really important space. It has been for a long time. And, and as we move forward with this, as, as excited as we all are, I, I want to make sure that we're honoring it and, in a good way. So with that, I think that I'll just hold the rest of my thoughts because I think that it could be best, best said by moving to approve this motion. So with that, I will move to approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Olympia, Washington, authorizing the sale of city-owned real property located at 900 Plum Street Southeast to Island Enterprises, Inc., a wholly owned enterprise of the Squawson Island Tribe, a federally recognized Indian tribe, for future redevelopment and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase and sale agreement.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? I don't usually second motions. I was waiting for somebody else to say it. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we look forward to seeing you again. Seeing you. And we look, we look forward to seeing renderings of, of what will be proposed shortly. So thank you for being here tonight. It's good to see you all. Good night. Okay, so actually, before we move on, I do just want to say thank you and acknowledge the staff of our municipal court for joining us tonight. And we look forward to further correspondence. So we will move on to council reports. I'll begin with the mayor's report. Just yesterday, I went to a meeting at the governor's office to advocate for additional funding for the state's rights of way initiative. As you know, this is money that was initially designated as one-time funding. And now we're at the tail end of that three years that that money was to be used for. And now we are asking for the state for additional money so that we can continue operations of the sites where we have removed those who were homeless from those states' rights of way into places of permanent supportive housing. And in order to continue those operations of those sites, we will need additional funds. And so I was there along with mayors Debbie Sullivan of Tomwater and Mayor Andy Ryder of Lacey and also Thurston County Chair of the Board of Commissions, Ty Mensah. And we, there, there are two proposals, both in the, the senate and the house budget. The senate has a little bit more funding and we know that there is, everyone's asking for dollars. And so what I would like to do is provide the governor's office with a specific detailed list of what is our, what is the bottom line and what does the most dire situation look like? We know that if we don't continue to fund this, the folks that we have removed from those sites, the state's rights of way into these sites could potentially end up back out on the street. And, and we need to make sure that that doesn't happen and roll, and we start eroding and rolling back all of our progress that we've made. And so what I would like to do is provide the governor's office with a, a very detailed list of like, how many people are we talking about that's going to end up back on the streets? You know, what, what will it look like if we continue to, you know, neglect the funding that is really needed to address this major issue that's not just here in Thurston County, but across the state? And we should be investing in it. And Thurston County is seen as, as a model in our response as well. And we kindly reminded the governor's office that Thurston County and Olympia specifically is the front and backyard of the capital. So, and then lastly, since we last met, we had our legislative update and I just wanted to provide a, a brief update on what has happened with reparations. So there has been a budget proviso amendment that was introduced by Senator Bob Houseagala. And it decreased the amount from 1.3 million dollars for the study to 300,000. Yeah, that's pretty substantial. So we will take what we can get and we will see what we will end up, you know, towards the end of the session with that budget proviso. But it is only in the senate's version. It is not in the house's version. And so we are continuing to make sure that we push and advocate for, for that to stay in the budget. And that's my latest. And I will start to my right with Councilmember Madron.
Great. The Land Use and Environment Committee met on March 27th. We are sending a couple more chapters of the comprehensive plan to the full council. One of those is for the Capitol Facilities Plan chapter, not the Capitol Facility Plan itself, just the chapter on how we do the Capitol Facility Plan. And also transportation, which is a big one. Robert, we missed you during that discussion, but we know you'll get another, you'll, you'll get a bite of the apple when it comes to the full council. And also coming to the full council is the Planned Action Ordinance for the Capitol Mall Triangle. Long time coming. It is coming. And yes, Robert also missed you for that one, but yeah. You'll, you'll see it when it gets to the full council. That's all I got. That's my report.
Thanks. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? All right, seeing none. Councilmember Gilman.
Let's see. On Saturday, I was with 10,000, wait, that's probably not for here. Okay. But this afternoon, I was with the Thurston County Board of Health. And related to the pinwheels, the, the primary presentation I received this, this afternoon was about child abuse and fetal and infant mortality. And it's both sobering that we, we have about 2,500 victims of abuse, child abuse referred to Child Protective Services each year from Thurston County. That's, that's a lot of people. And 250 to 300 cases a year that require a specialized pediatrician to find out what, what happened. So that's, that's the sad part. The amazing part was the folks we met from the Thurston Prosecutor's Office, from Public Health, from Providence, who are, are working as a team. And one pretty cool one is called Count Your Kicks. And it's something that's been done in other states, and Thurston County is the first place in Washington to implement a program where you encourage people who are pregnant to keep track of how frequently the developing baby is kicking. And if that changes, that's a reason to go see the doc. And then, they're working to educate hospital and clinic staff about what, what sorts of screenings you might do if somebody comes in saying the kicks aren't the same as they were. So, I'm just, I was, I was, it was both difficult to hear the reality of child abuse in our community and in our county. And it was also really heartening to hear from several of the people who are making it their life's work to, to combat the child abuse and to help more babies survive to adulthood. So, that's my report.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? It's good stuff to know. Thank you. And while you make, you can't necessarily speak to that first thing you were gonna speak about, I'll just say that. 5,000 people demonstrating their right to protest and petition our government peacefully is a good thing. All right. Mayor Pro Tem win.
Yeah, it was awesome. I mean, anyone that saw the photos, it was, it was so wonderful. It's just as like, it's like you couldn't help but be emotional. It's like a Tyler Perry movie. You felt every single emotion possible. You got mad, you know, maybe you laughed, you saw some folks, you got sad, and then you were smiling again. It was wonderful. And with that, I don't have any reports. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilmember Green.
I have a report. I got to go attend my first solid waste advisory committee meeting last week. So, yeah, just a couple of things that I wanted to share out. One is they talked about, I think most of you are probably aware, there's a Hazo House out at the Waste and Recovery Center, so a place you can take household cleaners and paints. And anyway, they've, they've established a reuse program, which is a coordinated program where nonprofits can come seeking certain items, so certain things, if it's a mostly still-full bottle of cleaner or household products, some of those kinds of things can potential, can access those things. So for, particularly for nonprofits working with shelters or places that might have good use for those. So that, that program has launched, and they're starting to do some outreach to the nonprofit community. The biggest item, though, was a rate study review. So they spent, I'm not even sure how long, but I'll assume months. The county did conducting a, a rate study on the rates that people pay when you take things to the Waste and Recovery Center, but also that commercial haulers like the City of Olympia pay when they, it's called a tip fee, when they, when they take things there. And the, the committee did approve forwarding to the county commission some recommendations for increases over the next couple of years. They have not increased those rates since 2012, so they're a little far behind, unfortunately, with some big Capitol Facilities projects on their plate. So that will go forward to the county commission, and I know the city staff as well aware of kind of what some of the impacts of that will be on, on individual customers. The, the impacts are gonna be quite small, but on the larger city scale, it'll just be a little more challenging. And then the last thing, and I will just plug, and I will tell people to go to their website if they're interested, but they, they have a couple of cool events coming up that the, the County Public Works is, is sponsoring or putting on. One is a fix-it fair. So if you're not familiar with these, you take small appliances or things that just need some level of repair, and there are folks there who know how to do that and will help you, help you work through it. That's coming up. There's an Earth Day event coming up, which will include touch a trash truck or recycling truck, some, some sort of touch, truck touching scenario. But then also, you know, perfect for this time of year is a free compost giveaway. So those are all on the Thurston County Public Works website, super easy to find. So, that ends my report.
Great. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Green? All right, seeing none. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I'm gonna start out with some joy. So two things that gave me great joy this past week. One was yesterday when the Senate Ways and Means Committee passed the rent stabilization bill out, and it will now hopefully go to the floor of the Washington State Senate. Olympia leading the way. It's really excites me. The second one I heard in the rallies that I'm gonna talk about, so I don't know, I missed a memo, so, but was in Washington DC last month, the activists from the district, so the city, took over 100 senate offices at the same time. And they got a bill to be able to keep their own tax dollars in Washington DC. That was really cool to hear. I heard about it while I was watching the hands-off rally on the mall. And it was this woman, who I wish I knew her name. She was charismatic, and she, she grabbed me as soon as she started talking, you know, those speakers that you just, like you can't. And I've been quoting her again and again and again since I drove through the Capitol and saw thousands of people streaming, not streaming online, like walking to the Capitol in our downtown. And since, you know, since I was last in city council, we're in a trade war, and Canada has broken up with us. And I'm needing, like, what, what can I do? What can we do? You know, protesting is nice. It's awesome that it's peaceful. We have to find action. And this woman laid out three things. And I started with the joy because the most important part is that a dictator cannot suppress our joy. And so, hold on to joy, everyone. Embodied joy. Take up all the space that you can and organize your community. If you're not doing that right now, I worry that our country will fail because it will take all of us to save it, regardless of what side of the aisle we are on or what our political values and beliefs are. We are in a constitutional crisis, and the checks and balances are falling apart in front of our eyes. And so, if not here, then where?
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. As I'm listening to you talk, I'm, I'm also hearing out, out of the other side of my ear, why is the city council talking about national stuff again? And I think that we all feel the pains of what's happening at the federal level. It's coming all the way down, right? And not just down to local government. I'm talking into people's houses. Their tables, right? And this stuff has real effects on the people who live in this community, who live in this state. And we can't afford to not speak to it. I think it's what we were elected to do. And so, if anybody's wondering why from time to time, you might hear one of us, like Councilmember Cooper just so eloquently did, speak to the moment we're in. It is a moral moment. It is something that I think is incumbent upon every elected official and those of us who aren't elected to speak up about what's happening. And, and so, thank you for coming here and reminding us that it's, it's part of our jobs to, to do this here locally, but also speak to something that's very real, that has real impacts to the people who live here. And it's not always something that we necessarily have total control over, and it's a good reminder to talk about what we can't control. So, thank you. Councilmember Vanderpool.
Yeah, before I get to my report, I, I respond to that a little bit. And I, I, I think that one of the things that local government has a responsibility to do right now, to Jim, to, to Councilmember Cooper's point, is create hope for people, right? We and local government are limited in how much money we have, how much staff hours we have, but, you know, what we do locally can make people feel that government is there for them, particularly when they feel nervous and they feel that they're in a situation where they're not sure what to do. And so, to, I, I appreciate Councilmember Cooper speaking to that. I really do. So, anyway. Intercity Transit Authority met thus, this last week, and we got a legislative update and review, you know, about the state budget and particularly around public transportation dollars, about state transportation dollars. And I, I asked a little bit about, you know, what, where are we with that? Because we're hearing a lot about the state budget, about city budgets, and I was very curious about where we are in transportation dollars, right? You know, if we lose federal dollars, it's gonna affect public transportation, it's gonna affect public works. And I'm very curious about what the state's response is to that. And, and I asked particularly, you know, the state constitution says that a lot of our tax, gas tax dollars have to go to ferries into the highway system. And I asked particularly, you know, what is the, what is the ultimate goal in trying to get some of that funding towards city, county, public works or towards public transportation to help fill those gaps? Because there, there, we're gonna run into a situation in the future where, you know, relying on sales tax will be there. And it seems like from, from getting a sense of where priorities are, there's a bit of a push and pull going on. A lot of folks that have been in the world of transportation on, and the Senate and the House, it seems like, you know, a lot of it is making sure that highway projects are paid for, and then there's another group that feels that we need to move more money towards public transportation and localized infrastructure. And so, I don't, I did not get a sense that there was any sort of reforms coming out this year, but I'm looking forward to eventually maybe, maybe making progress in future sessions. I will say, though, that on positive note, the e-bike rebate program is starting tomorrow, which is a state program where if you wanted to buy an e-bike or had an interest in buying an e-bike, the state will rebate you, rebate you up to $1,800 depending on your household income. And I think that programs like that will definitely help drive some of it. But again, I, I'm hoping that there'll be more of a, an interest and look at the other parts of the state budget in, in future sessions. That said, there was also, we also have a few Earth Day events coming up here in the city. You know, the Squawson Park event every year on Earth Day. I, I always encourage people to go to that. And there's also the Bark Bike to the Market event that's gonna go on this year. I try to do both. I try to show up to Squawson Park, talk to some folks, and then bike down to the market. So I encourage folks to go out and do that. Hopefully, it'll be warm weather this year. And then, my other update, the neighborhood matching grants, we're still making our way through those. We have so many applications this year for the, the neighborhood matching grants that we are about $6,500 over on the budget for that, for requests, which I don't think has ever happened before. And so, that's really cool. It's good to see that there's so much interest in what we can do. A lot of the applications go from, you know, one application was trying to build a kind of an easement, which is a, a path between different neighborhoods, between a cul-de-sac and another cul-de-sac, to create kind of a walking path and a biking path for community. Some of it is your traditional block parties that we fund every year through the neighborhood associations. And some of them were really interesting about doing neighborhood planner boxes, where there'd be planner boxes in, in a neighborhood that would be on the, kind of the front yards of different neighbors, and it would be a shared community thing. And I think that's also very cool stuff. So, yeah, that's, that's my updates.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanderpool. Any questions or comments? I, I actually do have one. You mentioned the neighborhood matching grant, and I just quickly just remembered that. I remember we had a public commenter come in about the matching grant process and that there was some sort of issue with timing. And, and if I recall, it had to do with planting a certain plant. Did we ever resolve that?
We're still working through the timelines on all of that.
Okay.
It's something that, as Susan McLaughlin has come on board, I'm gonna be talking with her more about working with staff on timing.
Okay. It's weird how your brain like remembers stuff like, I don't remember all the details, but I just remember. Yeah, okay. Thanks. Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none. City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing specific to report. I did take a note of your request around a letter to the state around the list of number of people displaced and kind of the dire situation we're facing. So I will send a note out to the other city managers and the county manager, and we'll work to get that letter together.
Great. Thanks, Jay. Yeah, and I'll talk to you as well about some, some other thoughts. In addition to a letter, I also want to get the governor's office some specific details about, because everybody's asking for money, right? And, and so, we want to make sure that we, we give them a breakdown of like our sites and how many people are we talking about here? And, you know, give them as much detail as possible so that when they have the budget in front of them, they know exactly what we need.
Gotcha.
All right. Assistant City Manager. Jay, is that it?
Yes, that is it for me.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Wow, what a meeting. Okay, so at this time, we are gonna recess for five minutes, and we will reconvene in room 423 for up to 90 minutes for an executive session pursuant to litigation and potential litigation. No decisions will be made. After that executive session, we will be adjourned for tonight.